...
It's ten o'clock, I'll call the meeting orders, roll call.
Barton three, Sanders eight.
Yeah.
Item number two, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, recognize P S. Thank the sign in seat going around now, we want to thank everybody for being here. Got a good crowd today. Item number five, you're there.
Yes, uh, starting next week, we're going to be having our meetings. We've got a safety board meeting on the twenty fourth at two o'clock, a theme meeting on the twenty fifth at nine thirty, elected officials meeting April twenty fifth. Uh, quarterly safety meetings start this Wednesday at K T C at seven thirty, and then the following week, uh, the twenty fourth and the twenty fifth. So, um, these are coming around, and so I've printed this off, this I'll let everybody know, and elected officials, and we'll get this out to them. So we do have a C E D meeting this week, and we also have a two thousand nineteen emergency relief class that is right after that, that we go to for two and a half to three hours this week. Uh, we have asked Erin to go to this meeting with us also. Um, his last day with us will be the nineteenth. We have already run an ad in the paper for emergency management, so we'll be doing interviews on that in the near future. Uh, let's see. The jail payment, uh, starting in April of this month, uh, is forty-four thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents per month. This is starting the new year. We, uh, the difference, uh, this month for April is eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, which is on our agenda for this month. The use tax, uh, for April that got the printout on was thirty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents. Last month was twenty-nine thousand nine twenty-one and sixty-one, so it's rising a little bit at a time. We also are paying interest on our junior loan, which is twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and then the first payment is due in October, the other payment is due, was due in October two thousand eighteen and then two thousand nineteen, uh, um, April, we'll have to end up paying that. The quarter percent for this month was twenty-three thousand twenty, twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, oh, twenty-three, thirty-nine. The one percent for the county is ninety-two thousand, oh, ninety-three, fifty-two. The sheriff is forty-six thousand, oh, forty-six, seventy-eight. And then the fire department's a quarter was twenty-three, oh, twenty-three, thirty-nine. So everything seems to be picking up a little bit, I know it varies from month to month, but this is some information that is, I thought that was very interesting, that the county needs to know. Um, I try to get these reports every month and look them over. Sometimes, you know, it just kind of keeps you up. Y'all, here's your copy, made you one. So... And today, we've got in our M and O general fund, we've got thirty-nine thousand, seven, seventy-three, fifty-one.
What was that?
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand, seven, seventy-three, fifty-one. Uh, I think that's about it that I've got today.
Bill, don't you have any review? Anybody else? If not, we'll move on without the six. Approve commissioners proceeding from previous meetings.
I've read over the minute, the previous minutes from the last meeting I approved.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by Senator, second of the round.
Sanders eight?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Barton three?
Yes. Item seven, blank at P L. We have one to Fleet Corps for six hundred dollars out of S J A two. Another one to Fleet Corps for one thousand dollars out of S S M two. Another one to Performance Food for sixteen hundred dollars out of S C A two. That's the one, three, oh.
Here, would you like a chair?
Only three. Lead motion, get through.
I'll make the most one, number seven.
Second.
Sanders eight?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, discuss considered march, monthly report, report to office. Almost much of the approved, yes.
My second.
Barton two? Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Sanders eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Look at what we need to trade in.
Trade. Hey, item. Item number. Item number nine, discuss consider moving forward, the commissioners will review the monthly cash balances beginning with the month of March two thousand and ten.
Not ignore just this issue. Not ignore the actual.
Kind of going to do, but I don't think.
Fine. You want to look at it first.
Not well, the times, I doubt they count. Right. If you leave motion on this, number nine.
I'll make a motion on number nine.
I'll say.
Sanders eight?
Barton three?
Yes.
Yes.
Really clear.
Yes. Okay, for the sake of time, I'll look at them right here after the meeting. Moving on without, we're discussing, consider approval for the disposal of calling perhaps County District Two greater, two thousand seven seventy C eights. Uh, two thousand Chevrolet dump truck model seven eighty-four, and I'm gonna read the seal number. Unless, if these are the beasts, you're gonna trade them in?
Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna be in a bid that we're gonna be trading in, we're gonna put the bid on, uh, the agenda for next week.
According to state orders, we have to do this disposal.
I'll make a.
Before you do that.
Yes. Uh, I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Sanders eight?
Yes.
Barton three?
Yes.
Really clear.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item eleven, discuss consider signing the teens and thirties, granted with fact of fox nation, July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
That's what this called pay, you know, they can finish up P M F and pay this twenty-five to this year, is that what this is?
No, this is just the two and ten agreement for juveniles.
Okay, yeah.
We, we usually do several of these, so, you know, you don't have to use them, but if you don't have a contract, you can't use them.
Yeah, you can't. Juvenile, you haven't worked outside.
Sometimes if there's a, like, we have options for you.
Doesn't, doesn't cost anything, it was, uh.
Yes, right. Recognition.
Item number nine, come over here.
My second actually.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Sanders eight?
Yes.
Barton three?
Yes.
This one, I just.
That's all, so. Okay, item twelve, discuss consider finding resolution to transfer mine from general fund into the Grove Club New Capital Bond to pay eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I'll make a motion on number twelve.
I'll say.
Sanders eight?
Yes, new player.
Yes.
Barton three?
Yes. Okay, item number thirteen, Robert Tool, break commissions on abandoned coal mine reclamation project being designed north of Stigler Project, is long made out of forty-four forty road and south of twelve hundred road, to local creek project, also assigned a consent to right of entry on county road.
Wow, you just said it all, I don't.
Well, I gotta say anything else.
We do appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you for allowing us to be added to your agenda today. We just wanted to brief you on this particular project, let you know what was going on in particular. Commissioner Zachary is occurring in District Number Two up there, but we wanted to review that with you, let you know what was going on and, uh, and what we're doing. Allow me, if you would, to introduce, uh, the folks brought with me here today, Ms. Valerie Rogers, she is our program engineer. Kenneth Brookins is our administrative assistant. Uh, Mr. Henry Roy is our boots on the ground, lives right here in Stigler Haskell County, and actually works our entire sixteen county, uh, area, uh, doing a multitude thing, not the least of which is our emergency coordinator, and no, we're not gonna let him apply for a job. I mean, but, uh, first, we want to keep him. And then we have Mr. Keith Beatty, he is with, uh, Freezing Nichols Engineering Firm, and they're doing the design for this particular project. But, uh, just give you a little overview of the abandoned mine land reclamation program. Our mission is to, uh, protect lives, repair scarred land, and improve the environment. And with every project that we accomplish, we, we accomplish those three objectives as well, protect lives, repair scarred land, and improve the environment. Uh, the program came into existence in nineteen seventy-seven when the federal government passed the, uh, Surface Mining Control and Reclamation Act in nineteen seventy-seven, and that actually created two programs. It created a regulatory program, uh, that required coal mine companies to perform reclamation concurrent with their mining operation. We're not involved in that, that's ran by the Department of Oklahoma, Department of Mines. We operate the abandoned mine land reclamation program, which is the other program, uh, that it created. Uh, the abandoned mine land reclamation program is a non-regulatory program, and it's designed for the purpose of eliminating all the hazards that were left by previous coal mining operations. And there's a multitude of different hazards that we, we address, and our, again, our mission is to eliminate those hazards, to protect lives, that's the reason the program was brought into existence, to start with. So, uh, we've got a project out northwest of, uh, town here, northeast of town, I'm sorry. That one, the process of designing, and we just wanted to review that with you because it does involve county roads, and that's the reason for the right of entry, and that we need, um, commissioners, in particular, uh, you and Commissioner Zachary, with, uh, for, uh, entry onto the road if we need to impose upon it. We don't think we will, but just in case we, we have to in some way, shape, form, or fashion, you know, we need that right of entry. Now, our program is funded solely by the coal companies, based on, uh, fees that are assigned to every ton of coal that has been mined since nineteen seventy-seven, and so there's no taxpayer dollars involved in this. It's, it's dollars that go into a, a trust fund, it's operated by and administered by the, uh, U S Treasury, and that's where we get our funding for these, uh, these reclamation projects. But, that does, uh, provide a pretty good economic benefit to whatever location we're in when we're doing one of these projects, because for every, for every, uh, dollar of grant money that we expend on one of these construction projects, a dollar fifty-nine goes back into the local economy, it's multiplied and circulated around, so our projects benefit everyone, not just, uh, those that, uh, that are, that are impacted by the hazards, but benefit, uh, the local economy as well. So what I'd like to do is ask Valerie Rogers, our A M L program engineer, to kind of explain our reclamation project to you. We've got a couple of big maps, trying to bother you one more time. And, uh, they say, uh, one picture's worth a thousand words, and since I don't even know a thousand words, I like to use a lot of pictures. So we've got some big pictures right here, that I'm going to, uh, hold up here, and let Valerie proceed to, uh, explain what they involve and what it is.
Okay, so, basically, our main objective is to eliminate this hazard. It's four point six acre, it is about twenty-eight feet deep, and it's extremely close to the road. So this is our main objective, is to get rid of this hazard, safety hazard right here. And basically, the basic design that we are doing is we're gonna take some earth from this hill right here, it's gonna be flat, like a hundred feet or whatever, and then we're gonna start taking some earth from here, and we are gonna fill this in, so you won't have that anymore. And we're also gonna fill, this is just a couple of feet deep, but we're gonna go ahead and fill this in. There are some spoil piles down here that we're gonna utilize also. There's some spoil material right here that we're gonna utilize, and this, just kind of clean all this up and make it look a lot better, and get rid of this main hazard. In the process, we are designing a, actually, Keith is, there will be a channel right here. This, that's what this pink is, that will take all the water that it takes now, and it will take the same amount of water to this box. We are not gonna touch this area right here where it breaks, so we're not gonna do anything to how the water splits or which way the wa, we're not gonna send more to this bridge, we're not gonna send more to this box, that's, that will stay exactly the same, and this is designed to carry that flow instead of just it running through this huge pit. We are also designing, because as you know, this pretty much runs constant. This pit from the north flows to the south, and it goes through, that will also be taken care of in this design. Okay, now, based on, um, the design for the boxes and everything, there is a potential for some backwater. So we have designed, this is, for better sake, it's gonna be a ditch, but it's further off the road than the normal ditch, that will allow area or volume for that backwater, so we don't just inundate his field with backwater to get the backwater. And, but those side slopes, were they a six to one, five to one, what are they?
Six to one.
The side slopes are six to one, it's just a few feet deep, it's very mowable for the landowner when it's not in water, so there's no safety hazard with this, that just allows that backwater to go back in there and, as I said, just like I said, inundate his field. Um, and that is the main objective of this design, and that's the basic idea of it.
So will it be reclaimed to level status, or general?
Yes, yeah, I mean, to the top, yes.
And will that creek be lined with anything, that re-channelization?
Based on what velocities we get and stuff, we will line where we need to, and do rip up where we need to, yes.
Rip rap?
Yes. Yes. Because, as you know, right here, that's eroded quite a bit right there, you know, and it just, so yes, we will take care of all the erosion like that.
This is a tremendous hazard because this kind of road, of course, is built up quite a bit. It wouldn't take much for somebody not paying attention to drive all that, and if you drove all that into that, could be a grounding. There's a lot of folks pull off here and fish that's, they're obvious, and therefore the landowner, you know, wanted this hazard, it's quite a liability, and they wanted to have it removed, so let's leave all the questions.
Right, and when they done that bridge and that road, I had C D come back in and put up those guardrails, because there was no guardrails at that three-way intersection, and that's just an accident. You know, because if you didn't know where you was going, coming from the east, going west, you'd run off right there. So we had them come back in and restructure that, and they done that. It was not in the plans, but it did get put back in, so.
There's also been several stolen cars retrieved from that.
And we could still. We have found vehicles and pits before, definitely.
How many projected yards are the estimate to be?
And, do you remember that, what it was, sixty?
I don't know, but we've got quite, we've got quite of that.
Yeah, I said that, I just can't remember, off the top of my head.
Just to second.
We're just in the very preliminary stages of this design, that's really why we wanted to, we like to visit with everybody that's going to be involved in it, so that we can glean whatever information we need to incorporate into the design and make sure that it works for everyone.
Um, the field, it's about a hundred and forty thousand yards.
Do you have an engineer's estimate yet?
No, we do not. We're not at that point yet, we've just got our concept.
Any other questions or any other information that you could share with us that might be, might be helpful or useful, so.
It'd be a great thing to get that filled in, that's been a hazard for years and years, plus a dump site that we've seen that too.
Part of the, part of our design, of course, was to, to request the engineer's report, the form for this box and the design of this box down here and everything, so we could incorporate that into our design. We just want to review that with you just real, real quick. Let you know what we gleaned from that report, and if there's more that we need to glean from it, please let us know, but I'm going to let Valerie go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay, this, here I'm just showing like some low and high points along the road between the box and the bridge. And before they did any work, they basically said like the two-year storm would flood the road and go, overtop the road. Now, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but like a two-year storm is like one in two chance that it's going to be that storm, or a fifty percent chance. And around here, a two-year storm is just under four inches in twenty-four hours, okay? Now, with the new design of the bridge and the box, according to their report that I gave you, and it floods in the eight-year storm. So it still overtops the road if it gets to the eight-year storm, and, which is like a twelve and a half percent. An eight-year storm, if you kind of interpolate between, because you usually don't use an eight-year storm, and it's about five and a half inches in twenty-four hours. And it shows, based on their numbers and on the last, the last two pages of this that I gave you, I kind of highlighted, it shows, the first one is for the bridge, and it shows an overtopping elevation at five twenty-three thirty-three. And then if you look down at the bottom, that's telling you the eight-year storm, so I'm the second to the last page. Okay, that's for the bridge. Then the last page is for the box and the proposed box, and it shows that it floods at the five twenty point one-two at the eight-year storm. And, and also in the body of the report, like on page two, it tells you that it's designing for a rural local road system with a five to ten-year storm design requirement, so they meet the requirements. And, so basically, it's saying that it's going to overtop right around here for the bridge and up in here for the box, that it's in your eight-year storm. And, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of this and that what we're designing does not affect, it's not going to make it flood more, but it's not going to make it flood less either. You know, those, we took their design into account with our design. Like I said, we made sure that this is designed to allow for the greatest flow that will come through here, so we're not going to back any water up into the creek, and that we've also allowed for some backwater, so we don't back it up and cause any issues. So, I don't know, I mean, if you have any questions on that.
We can't change the hydrology, hydrology on our projects, so we will gather all the information we can possibly gather up and.
That is our main objective, to not change it in any way, shape, or form. Do you all plan on starting, do you have a plan?
We do not have really a construction date, you know, projected per se. We've got, you know, our budgeting plan, twenty twenty-one, perhaps, if we get our funds. Because there's no coal mining performed in Oklahoma much anymore, it hasn't been since nineteen seventy-seven. We're what's called a minimum program state, meaning that we just, we don't hit the threshold for enough funding to run a program, so it gets supplemented from other states as well. We only get three million dollars a year, that doesn't go far when we've got sixteen counties and we're trying to do projects that some of them are, you know, as high as a million dollars. Most bars are not quite that high, but we get projects like that. So this is going to be a pretty good project as far as that goes, don't have an engineer's estimate at this point in time. But that's kind of what we're looking at, is funding, and of course, I understand you all have probably heard about the American Barring Beetle, but that is our biggest problem. You know, if you want to encourage the congresspeople to take that off endangered species list, why, we'd be pleased with it, because we've got to survey every year before we go into construction, before we can even request an authorization to proceed from the federal government. We've got to perform an American Barring Beetle survey. It used not to be a problem at all, but this last year, we got five hits on surveys, and we got, we got five projects pretty much shut down and delayed for another year. It can always happen here, over and over and over again, with this project, so that's the biggest challenge we've got. But in terms of, said we're just moving into design, we'll probably, if y'all so desire, come back and review the preliminary design with you before we go into the final design. Because once we move into the final design, we need to know everything possible that we need to take into account. We typically like to visit with all parties that are involved before we move into that final device. We may ask to come speak to you again and just show you what we know in more depth and detail. Appreciate that.
We purchased some of those bugs before.
I wish we could, we checked into that, and it's something that, because we were such a poor state agency, they gave us a break and said, well, it'll only be nine thousand dollars an acre. Well, I think that's better than farming ranch, isn't it? Well, again, thank you so much for your time and your information, we appreciate it. If you feel led to, and we hope you do, we could get that right of entry signed and approved, that'd be great, wonderful, then we can move on and finish up our design, come back, please. Thank you, thank you.
I'll make a motion on number thirteen.
We're going to leave you a copy of these maps, take some of them later, show them a little bit more, both copies there.
I gave her some cards also for y'all. Yes, I'll go ahead and pass now, thank you. Up here in forum, when we did one here in the last couple of years, they found three.
We floated three cars out of them, and one of them had been stolen out of Claremore just about three weeks before. We floated it to the top. But the first one, they called the sheriff's department out because they were afraid it was going to find somebody in it. That's right, thank goodness we never have. Again, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming forward to the project.
Yes, sir, thank you. Call us if you have any questions at any time, we'd be happy to answer them from number twenty-two, and that's it, when we get a fund, Mary, we'd like to come back. Thank you, Henry, you get it.
Say, Henry.
Item sign appropriations, transfer appropriations, check proceeding, please, I'd like to.
Free funding.
Sorry, I told you I was going to leave these, oh, you have more to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, they've stuck together, I mean, I didn't want to pass it on.
This for the three-way intersection, yes, sir. You been out there lately? Just some new bridge. Yeah. Tell them that, no, no, yeah, forty-four forty. Is that forty-four forty?
I wonder why they charge that other forty dollars.
What she said, ninety seven dollars. The invoice for ninety seven.
I think more.
Old dynamite or glass you kept.
I'll be done with that.
Good. I don't want any more.
Less today.
Amber sleeps a lot, thank you. That's what she owes me lunch.
She sleeps better there. Yeah, she'll pay, she'll buy it. She worries about it all the time.
And Shank is in a little bit too. I was worried about her driving in the dark.
Yeah, I thought about that before, but I said he does what he's doing, I think.
I did forget to mention that from April of two thousand seventeen to March two thousand eighteen, and April of two thousand eighteen to March two thousand nineteen, that was seventy nine thousand on the difference that was not paid in from one year to the next, so that was up.
Drops seventy nine thousand.
Yeah, dropped seventy nine thousand. The year previous, from one hundred and thirty eight thousand to fifty eight. That was a big, big difference.
That is big. Only here was zero.
Well, we're getting, we're getting down there, so look at that time. Look better than it did last year. We're hoping for a better year.
Need more commerce.
I'm looking forward to better all the time. Just can't get no worse.
It is looking better everywhere.
Yeah, well, that's great.
Prisoner count's thirty one.
That's lower.
Yeah, that's good. But our food count, it must be fat, because our food, our performance foods, and it's still sixteen hundred. He doesn't spend all that though, does he? He always puts that in. I sent him about twenty pounds of crop to him last night.
Really? See, that's twenty pounds crop. Not my family.
That's obviously right to eat.
That's a lot of crop.
Yeah.
Won't you say you're going with that dynamite? Just laid everything.
I'm not a very good person. I like catching, but I didn't fish.
He thinks it's scar tissue, not sure. Yeah, Sarah's good. Yeah, it's been a while. She may be clear. She's coming back for Justin today. Just, is there something to do?
Billy, don't. They brought that trap code to you, or have you done any kind of?
Put the trap on, but I don't like that. They're going to the streets both. That's what he said when he said.
He's running the YI.
Yeah. So we got one with that, one with the ballast. Two, we're gonna find both.
Oh, man.
Yes, sir. As we always do, take the chicken. That's the best deal.
Best deal, there you go.
Sorry, I missed my business. I was hung up on a conference call this morning, but I wanted to just mention briefly, it talked about ADA, a couple of years ago, walking on getting this place ADA compliant. We got a email notification that the United States sued Harris County, Texas, because of not having ADA compliant polling places at every polling place. So I'd say that's something, you know, kind of to look at some things, it's kind of been kind of on the edge of whether it was compliant or not. And make those polling places.
Get them off the edge.
Be better to get them off the edge than have.
Right.
So this is something you might think about going forward.
Good.
There's the electric mail jail always come out of the S J F?
No, not those, no.
Is it appropriate to doubt to come out of working?
Yeah, I mean, who, who's the P O?
So it could be paid out, because now we have one that's sixteen oh seven, which is wondering if that was two months and miles and where it's been.
I think it was two months.
But in the summer, it gets real hot, it gets that high, but.
Didn't she, didn't she bring that back?
She, yeah, mom only did because it was one that was not paid.
She hadn't.
He called it on it.
Did she ever give us an amount?
No, no.
So this liable to actually be paid out of any of his funds? Would it always come out of his funds?
Yes. We'll also do something, we'll probably try to.
Randy, what account is it coming out of?
Uh, it came out of S J F, that too.
Now, but those accounts also changed the last year, so those are his accounts. You know, accounts will change completely, it's a state line.
The chart of, yeah.
Yeah, so it changes. I guess we'll get a lesson to learn what they're gonna be. We have to also go on that too. Keep it the same or new, since the treasury or not, which I don't think.
He could've paid himself.
That's just his M and O basis.
Having a little trouble catching up though.
And what is this going to?
That's a, uh, that two, twenty eight eighty five, the mail paid it, so it's a reimbursement.
This one's a reimbursement, has to like go back in.
General account, that's first time, I'm gonna double check and make sure.
You let them know that, and where it's going back in.
Yeah.
Between?
Well, I think it's going against the account. It's coming out of Mr. General, but they're paying for it.
It does go back in, and then I'll do a check.
It's a grinder, okay. Are you trying to use another grinder?
Well, transmission, it's not possible to probably go back. And it's about nine thousand dollars, I mean, hours, so. And there's a couple other questions after a while, Peter, when you're supposed to call them, so.
Tracy said we're harsh talking, I thought, I just want that compression or.
Yeah, it'll run just fine, sometimes it'll just die. I mean, you have blood upstairs, and, but I think we'll try to point that.
Will it give anything for it? Or that email?
Yeah, I mean, and that dump truck said, maybe it's, maybe it's, is that, is not, not passing any water, so. But we still got that family that Paul and Pop talk, it's been there for several years. We're still using it to, to parts.
There's no other business, we're moving out of fifteen, next to a general.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.